Good evening and welcome to the April 22, 2014 meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tracy Philbeck. I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner for the Dallas Township. I'd like to welcome our viewers and thank Time Warner Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For our television audience, I'd like to present to you your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my right.
Alan Fraley, Cherryville Township.
Good evening, Chad Brown, Riverbend Township.
Good evening, Mickey Price, South Point Township.
Good evening, Jason Williams, Gastonia Township.
Good evening, Joe Carpenter, Crowthers Mountain Township.
And Tom Keger, Gastonia Township.
This time I'll call the meeting to order while I have our invocation delivered by Commissioner Williams and a Fledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Price.
Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, God, and the privilege to live in this great country and the opportunity to live in Gaston County, God. We thank you for the opportunity to serve the people and the position you've put us in. Lord, I pray that you would guide our board tonight as we make important decisions. You would lead us the way that you would have us to go, and your will would ultimately be done. Lord, I pray that everything would be done the way you would have it be, and help us all this evening in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under common, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item tonight is zoning and public hearings. The County Commission will take citizen comment on the following issues: one zoning map change and number two, an order authorizing $175 million in school bonds. Before we go into public hearing, let me outline the rules of procedure for the hearing. Citizens wishing to make comment will be recognized by the Chair and then requested to step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Questions shall be directed to the Chair for a response. The Chair shall rule on all points of order. At this time, do I have a motion to go in public hearing? Second. Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Keger. In discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We are now in public hearing. First item, the Commission will take comment on the zoning map change, Z14-03, Venture Church Incorporated is the applicant. This time I'll ask Mr. David Williams, Planning Development Service Director, for comments. Mr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission and Planning Board, good evening. As you've stated, Mr. Chairman, we have one zoning application, Z14-03. The request is zoning map, Z14-03, is to rezone parcel 171-433 from General Industrial, which is I-2, to General Commercial, C-3, within urban standards overlay or USO. The applicant and owner is Venture Church, Inc., and is represented by Mr. Patrick Kelly and also Roger Self. Mr. Chairman, they are present this evening for any questions that you might have. The parcel consists of 12.63 acres and is located at 800 East Main Street, and this is in Dallas, North Carolina. Mr. Chairman, just as an update, this afternoon, the applicant requested to reduce the zoning area from 12.63 acres to 8.52, basically removing 4.11 acres from the zoning request, which will remain in the I-2 or General Industrial District of the zoning request if it is granted. The applicant explained that they are more interested in the more of the open area of this request. The current use on the property is a commercial/office space. At this time, I would like to refer to Elmo and also point out to you the area of the modification. If you can see it on the map. Again, Mr. Chairman, this is the area in question. As I kind of go around, it's bounded. The area that I'm talking about, the 4.11 acres that the applicant has requested removed tonight, is this particular area, so this would no longer be a part of the request. But the area that the applicant is wanting considered is this portion of the open space, which runs along Lower Dallas Highway. It's more of the open space area. I want to continue to refer to Elmo. The area, your map is a little modification. The area in black is the area that corresponds to the aerial map, which indicates this is the 4.11 acres that the applicant has requested be removed. The rest of it in blue, a hatched area, as I point to it, that's the area that the applicant is requesting be considered to the Commercial 3 or General Commercial District. As you look at that map, you can see there's already Commercial 3 on Lower Dallas Highway. That's Commercial 3 here in red. There's also some Commercial 3 not directly across the street, but not too far from it. Again, the property's already zoned industrial, and C-3 is a more restricted zoning district as the applicant makes the request. We do have some residential in the surrounding area, but it's more south of the area. Right here, you see RS-8, RS-8 here, and RS-12, which is some distance away. In terms of the comprehensive plan and looking and studying that, it is staff's opinion that the request, even in addition to the modification, is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The request was advertised and sent to adjacent property owners in accordance with county policy. Notice was also sent to the town of Dallas, and we received no comments as of today. Staff has received no calls regarding the proposed changes to this request. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Are there any citizens at this time wishing to comment? Hearing none, are there any questions from... Go ahead and come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Patrick Kelly, 865 Old Post Road, Cherryville, North Carolina, and I am representing Venture Church, 800 East Main Street, Dallas, North Carolina. We had purchased this property a couple of years ago, and we have done some research on what our highest and best use might be and consulted real estate agents. And then today, we went through a discussion about the building itself and decided that it might be a better idea to leave the building in the industrial zoning and then to continue with the zoning change on the portion that faces North New Hope Road.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Planning Board at this time? Are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners at this time? Hearing none, at this time I'll excuse the Planning Board to First Appearance Courtroom 2029 for deliberations, and you can go with them. Our next item is an order authorizing school bonds. The Commission will take comment on an order authorizing $175 million in school bonds. Before we take comment, I will ask Mr. Chuck Moore, County Attorney, to provide a brief overview. Once he has completed his comments, citizen's comment will be taken. I do just want to make sure that if you are here and you want to comment, this section is to extend the bonds. Later on in the agenda, the 8.5 million and the resolution of intent is later on, so you'll have another chance to speak under citizen's comment. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you recall, we spoke to the Board earlier this year about the need to extend our bond authority on the remainder of the 2007 bonds. Those bonds have a seven-year life, and they would have expired this coming November. The resolution that you have before you tonight would authorize an extension of that bond authority for three years. The Board directed us to go forward to acquire the extension. We notified the local government commission, requested their approval, and we gave notice for a public hearing, which was scheduled for tonight, to take citizen comment on extending the authority for those bonds. And the local government commission has granted its authority for us to go forward, so after citizen comment, you would be authorized to approve the order to extend.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. At this time, are there any citizens wishing to comment on extending an order to authorizing $175 million in school bonds? Are there any Commissioners wishing to comment or questions at this time? At this time, I'll entertain a motion for an order extending the maximum time period for issuing bonds under an order adopted by the Board of Commissioners for the county of Gaston, North Carolina, on August 7, 2007, entitled "Order Authorizing $175 Million in School Bonds." Motion is made by Commissioner Keger, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. This concludes the public hearing for tonight. The Board would like to thank each of you for your input. At this time, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Keger. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Our next item, we're at the business agenda, Agenda Revisions and Approval. Are there any items Commissioners wish to poll or have questions about? Commissioner Brown?
Just back on... Sorry, back on item M, just for the budget transfers, was that just a... I looked back into the explanation point. Was there a number amount to that, or was that just in general for departments that have already asked from the last time? Okay. Thank you.
For those that didn't hear, that is the item... Those are items within the county manager's authorization to approve. Okay? Any other items? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is. Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is approval of the minutes. Are there any Commissioners who have questions about the minutes?
The approval of the March 20th special meeting on May 8.
Motion's made by Commissioner Carpenter to approve the minutes as is, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have no citizens signed up to speak, or are there any citizens now would be the time to speak if you would like to speak on any of the issues coming before us, even though we didn't have anyone sign up? We do have someone? Are you going to speak? If you're going to speak, now's the time. Citizen comment.
You don't have to.
You don't have to. We want to make sure everyone has ample opportunity. Please state your name and your address for the record, and you have five minutes.
My name is David Hendricks. Live at 730 Cove Road, Gastonia. Here tonight to ask the Board, the County Commissioners, you know, as far as the extension of the school bonds, that's great. The money we have remaining from the construction of Stuart Kramer, I believe it's in excess of 8.5 million. If I'm correct, we've got that sitting that we're paying interest on currently. I'm here to ask you guys to please consider allowing the school board to utilize that for the repairs that are needed in the schools now. You know, it's not just for our children, it's also for the educators that spend a lot of time there. You know, our children spend a lot of time in these schools, more than, sometimes more than at home, and they deserve to be in a safe environment. The educators, they spend more time than our students there, so they deserve it as well. That's why I'm here tonight, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Are there any other citizens wishing to make comment? You would, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Catherine Roberts, 255 Vermont Drive, Stanley. Chairman, I'm here to make a statement for Board of Education member Chris Howell, who could not be here tonight. First, I want to thank Gaston County Commissioners for allowing a statement to be read on my behalf. My name is Chris Howell, and I've served on the Gaston County Board of Education since December 2012. Tonight, you have asked for input from the community on the issuing of a portion of the 2007 school bond money for the purpose of school improvement. In my humble opinion, as a school board member, I believe that one of my tasks, along with my fellow board members, is to identify school financial needs and give you a detailed explanation of those costs to you, the county Commissioners. In recent years, Gaston County Schools has identified $126-plus million in capital needs. Our school facilities cover just under 5 million square feet of area and are, on average, 38 and 1/2 years old. With cutbacks in funding over the years, combined with the area and age of our facilities, Gaston County Schools has gone from annual maintenance to daily emergency repairs. In short, our needs are many and the costs are high. I understand that this board has trust issues with Gaston County Schools, especially after the back and forth of school closures several years ago. I hope that you understand that this board that handled the issue is not the board that serves today. I understand that you, the county Commissioners, feel a great amount of responsibility and the fiscal accountability to Gaston County taxpayers, and I appreciate that being one of those taxpayers. I do not want to tell you how to fund the needs of Gaston County Schools, just as I do not want you to tell us what those needs are. I will tell you that you have the responsibility to fund the schools that includes capital needs. If you feel the issuance of the remaining bonds is the best method, please do that in their entirety. If you feel that the citizens of Gaston County should vote on a repurposing of those bonds, please do that quickly. If you feel that Gaston County Schools are not in need of repair and improvements, please state that boldly. But for the sake of our students, our families, our community, and our economy, please do not remain silent. Be the bold leader that the people elected you and I to be, and let's make Gaston County Public Education a priority and a success. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to comment? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Linda McDuffie, 102 Mirwood Road, Belmont. Yes, good evening, Commissioners. I did want to speak, just not first.
I understand.
As a mother of soon-to-be kindergarteners, I can only speak secondhand on the condition of school facilities. However, I do know this: strong schools are fully funded and supported by their community. Strong schools grow a tax base and attract business. Strong schools are at the center of a growing and thriving community. It is my feeling that we, the community, need to make a commitment to fully supporting the schools fiscally. First and foremost, we begin by seeing that our schools provide a safe, secure, healthy, and clean environment for our students to learn in. Therefore, without reservation, I support the use of school bond funds to address the list of much-needed maintenance and repair of buildings and facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else wants to speak, go ahead and line up. If not, after Joel, this will be it. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Joel Long, 204 Blue Heron Way, Belmont, North Carolina. First, I wanted to thank you for allowing me to speak for just a few minutes. From the business community I'm representing tonight, I wanted just to continue to thank you and the school board for all your efforts to work together to improve Gaston County economically. Through all the research and all the work we've done at the Chamber of Commerce and with you and with the school board, education continues to be one of the main focuses that we all need to improve in our county. And I wanted to urge you guys to continue to lead like you have been in the past, to work together to improve our county and our education system. Thank you, and continue the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Our next item is Consent Agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is a 2014 Legislative Request. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Legislative Agenda for the 2014 Session of the North Carolina General Assembly. Motion is made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Our next agenda item is Nonconsent Agenda, Item A. At this time, the Planning Board's not back, so we'll move to Item B. I'll go ahead and make the motion to appropriate $40,000 from fund balance to fund unexpected costs for the county's pre-trial services program as a result of changes in state law. I'll need a second. Seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? Commissioner Price?
Thank you. Just wanted to say a few words about why this has come about. This is a bill that was passed by the North Carolina Legislature this year, and what it made going to affect. People who, for whatever reason, and the number-one reason in Gaston County is failure to appear for a court date. So when this happens to an individual, and they get picked up for failure to appear, the magistrate and the judge are now required to make that individual post a bond or pay a bond to get out. So they may be on... And what it's costing us in our employees, our pre-trial services, will run out of money at the end of this month if we don't pass this allocation tonight. So they're having to spend more time trying to get people out of jail for the minor causes of failure to appear, because a magistrate now has to put them under a bond for them to get out. So I just wanted to make... There was some communications between our county staff and the North Carolina Legislature, our representatives, trying to get them to understand what this was going to do to our jail population by causing it to increase, and it was going to take pre-trial services, it takes anywhere from three to five days now to get people out of jail where the magistrate could release them on an unsecured bond, which they normally do on a failure to appear. So just want to give the citizens a little background on why this extra $40,000 is now having to come out of our fund balance.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Carpenter?
Well, I'd like to add to that, that the previous year, we fought that bill that was in the legislature and got it defeated, but somehow or another, it got slipped in at the last minute, and it was the bail bonds people wanting to get some more money, and it cost and used the citizens more dollars because they won their lobby there and got that through. So I intend to fight that, to get that reversed, and I hope we can send Commissioner Price down there to help us.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is Police Communications to Appropriate Fund Balance to Cover Calls for FY 2013, that the state has deemed the county paid from the general fund instead of the emergency telephone fund. Commissioner Carpenter makes the motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is to Transfer the Salary Cost of 911 CAD Database Coordinator from the 911 Surcharge 24 Account to the General Fund 10 Account. Commissioner Carpenter will make the motion, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion?
Well, that's to correct something, a procedural thing, that we were reclining one procedure and adding this new, and isn't that right, Chuck? Yeah. So it's just a procedural thing.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is Commissioner Price and Philbeck, County Attorney, to rescind an ordinance permitting reimbursement agreements. Motion's made by Commissioner Price. I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is County Attorney to Approve an Ordinance Permitting Reimbursement Agreements in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 153A-451. Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Philbeck. Is there any discussion? Motion carries... Go ahead. You got discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We're rolling. Next item is to Approve a Reimbursement Agreement with VCM Bowman LLC Pursuit to North Carolina General Statute 153A-451. Motion's made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Philbeck. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, here's the good stuff. Commissioner Philbeck and Carpenter, County Attorney, to authorize the capital project expenditures from Series 2009 school bonds. I will make that motion. Commissioner Carpenter will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Well, yeah, I just want to point out exactly what this is. This is the... Mr. Matters, if you'll correct me, this is the 8.5 million that is money we've already sold the bonds, and it's money left over from the Stuart Kramer project that we've already budgeted for, we're already paying on it. So this isn't new money, from my understanding. Just want to clarify that.
Commissioner, that is absolutely correct. It's approximately $8.5 million that was left over from projects that came in below budget, and this money is being repurposed for other capital improvements that are desperately needed, I would say.
The schools have provided us with their priority list, and clearly, you know, stuff that they've asked for is stuff that we'd all agree needs to be fixed. So I support this. I appreciate you clarifying exactly what this money is. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Any other questions? Commissioner Keger?
I just want to make a statement. I spoke privately to Mr. Booker, and I've been here a while, and we've had a lot of debate and discussions over a lot of years, and it was typical, for whatever reason and whoever organized it, to try to bring a lot of people in here to try to muscle us to do things. And I think that we're on... And Jeff agrees, we're on the right track, trying to work together instead of trying to use strength or force or intimidation or numbers. And I just want to say how pleased and proud I am that it's working like this, like we hoped it would be a couple of years ago, but thank you very much.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the biggest thing, I rode around last year with Mr. Booker, and we looked at these facilities and saw what need there is. I think my biggest concern is where the need is actually going to be. I don't have no problem, because I know we have lots of needs. Trust me, we have lots of needs. And I just want to make sure that... We're not telling them where to do it, but I want to make sure that those... If we're going to fix something as an HVAC, we maybe try to get the windows and do everything in a books-type setting, where we're not just fixing HVAC, we have door problems or any type of problems to that. That's just my concern. On the other side, I would like to implore the school board and the school system itself to use Gaston County contractors and make sure we do put notices out that they can have every legitimate shot to getting these bids because of where they're at, and that's their tax-paying money that's also paying for that, and I don't have a problem supporting this part of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Any other questions?
I go.
Commissioner Price?
Mr. Moore, I just want to make sure that it's clear legally that the bond money that was passed for new construction is okay to be spent on maintenance and renovation. Have no problem with that, but...
We'll wait just a second on Mr. Moore. And until he gets back, I'll make a quick comment. I as well support this. I want to make it clear that the extending of bonds doesn't require a tax increase. It affects... Zero effect on the tax rate. Also, reallocating this 8.5 million has zero effect on the tax rate. We're already paying taxes on that. And also, I think it's a good time where the public can see that... And also, I think it's a good time where the public can see that your commission, your school board are working together, trying to resolve some of these issues, and I think the way we're going about it is a fiscally responsible way. So that's my comments. Mr. Moore? Commissioner Price had a question. Commissioner Price?
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that we're under the same understanding, as well as the public, that the bonds that were passed were meant for new construction, that it's okay to spend or allocate the bonds now for maintenance and renovation.
Right, and that is the purpose of this resolution. The school board is, which is pursuant to some case law that exists in the state, has given us a resolution from their board requesting that these bond proceeds be repurposed, and given us a list of projects for which they wish to use these funds. And then to follow that up, we're required to make the determination and finding that these projects are needed and to approve the use of the funds in this way. We'll do a similar resolution should a decision be made to issue a new bond package sometime later. We'll do a very similar resolution that will authorize the repurposing of any new bonds, which is pursuant to statute and case law in the state.
Just want to make sure we're on solid ground.
We're trying to keep you there.
Price, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is to state the intent of the Board of Commissioners to issue 15 million in school bonds. I will make that motion. Commissioner Carpenter will second. I'll also make a few comments. I am perfectly, the, I think when this issue came up, we had talked to Mr. Booker, and it was my understanding if we could, we really couldn't guarantee anything because the board would have to vote on it at a further time, but if we could just give him some indication that we would be willing to look at not just the 8.5, but adding this 15 million to it, from my understanding, it would allow them to plan better, and I think even save on maybe some of the design costs and things of that nature. He is here, if you would like for him to speak to that. I'm also perfectly fine with either scratching out the intent of the 15 million and basically saying we'll have further hearings in whatever amount the public wants. It could be more than 15 million. I'm perfectly fine if you want to do that. I think what Mr. Booker, the superintendent of schools, looking for is just some kind of indication that we're willing to work, make sure that this is something the public wants, and it'll give him a little bit better idea of the plan and possibly save some money. So that's all I'll say at this moment. Any discussions? Commissioner Freyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to just move forward with the resolution like it is instead of clouding waters, because hopefully, we're going to give the public plenty of time before any of these new bonds would be released to come and make their comments, but I'm going to support this resolution. I just don't think we have any choice but to keep our schools in good repair. We've made commitments. We all know that there's things that have to be done. Some of our schools are literally falling apart at the seams. We're not going to be building a lot of new schools, it doesn't seem, so I feel like we're just going to have to make this a priority, and that's about all I've got to say. I will be supporting the resolution.
Am I clear that you would support it with the contingency that we would have some public hearings?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Freyler. Commissioner Price?
Thank you. I too, like Commissioner Freyler, I was here when the bonds were passed by the voters, and I'm glad that we are going to be able to use it for maintenance and renovation. It doesn't have to be necessarily spent on new construction. And I am like Commissioner Freyler, I do want to hear the public's input. I am in favor of this. It was voter-approved, it's just going for renovations and maintenance rather than new construction, which the population now has deemed that it's not necessarily in that venue. One of my concerns when we, or have been discussing this, was that the monies, the 8.5, and if this intent goes forward, that the school board not spend any of the money on facilities that were not in their long-range plans. So that was my concern on that venue. So just wanted to say that, and I think the public has spoken, they have approved these bonds, and I'm just glad we can get some maintenance and renovations out of the funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to thank Chuck this morning for the clarification on going back to the referendum, and same question that Mickey had about, was that able to go back and be repurposed? That was the big question that we had all week, not knowing this weekend. I know we had talked earlier with the school board meetings about maybe looking at some of the closings of some of the underutilized schools, not necessarily to closing them forever, just to try to, you know, try to get some of that back into more of one school so they could try to help the maintenance parts, saving some money there. But one of the things I do want to ask, I know we've asked the school board for a detailed plan for the 15 million, I'd like to also see a detailed plan on how we plan on paying that back as the commission. That's going to be the biggest piece of the puzzle, is how we're going to pay it. We have the revow coming, so we could hit our citizens very hard in a three-year time period. So I just wanted to urge the board and encourage them to try to work out a plan that goes along with Mr. Mathers and Mr. Booker, to work on that. That's where my hesitance has been on how we're going to pay for it, and once again, I would still implore the schools to try to get out the word to the Gaston County contractors on how we can use them to utilize their money inside the county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My opposition to this isn't necessarily the same as somebody else's. I think, I wrote a piece in the Gaston Gazette a couple of weeks ago, and it just talked about public trust of elected officials and local government. And when I did a little bit of research, I wasn't on the board when these bonds were voted on, but everything I could find talked about, you know, the overcrowding in schools, how we needed to build new schools, and that was the purpose for these bonds. And I think there is some legal leeway that we can use them for maintenance, and I think that we probably should consider using it for maintenance. My hesitancy lies with the fact they were sold to the public for new construction, and I've talked to other commissioners, and they remember the same thing, that this was for new construction. And I just think it breeds distrust among the public when we sell something a certain way to them and then use those funds in a different way. And I think for there not to be any public hearings for this particular resolution, there'd be very little notification to the public, and we're doing it on spring break, you know, Easter weekend. For me, I would like a little more notice, a little more public input, allow them to weigh in. The fact of the matter is, as Commissioner Brown said, this will impact our tax rate. Long-term, there's no way around it. We might can find some ways to handle it in the short term. At the end of the day, it's going to have an impact on our budget. So with that said, I think it's a big decision. I think it still may be something we need to move forward with, but I don't think we'd do it with lack of public information, without them having more opportunities to weigh in on such a major decision that we're having. So I would also, again, want to echo what Commissioner Brown said. We need to have a plan for how we're going to fund it moving forward, and again, have some public hearings, have public to weigh in. The intent, if we're going to have this intent, and I understand what it is, it's basically saying, hey, we're interested in moving forward. I think we can tell people we're interested in moving forward, we can tell Mr. Booker and the school board we're interested in moving forward. By moving forward with public hearings and public comments, I don't think we need a resolution. I think for us to have a resolution saying we intend to do it, and then we're going to go get citizen input, seems like we're getting the cart before the horse. I'd say we get the citizen input, and like Commissioner Philbeck said, we may decide to do something completely different, but to pass a resolution with the intent of getting input afterwards, it just seems a little backwards to me. So I can't support this today, but I do support moving forward with getting more weight in from the public. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Kegger.
Yeah. Mr. Williams addressed some of the concerns I have. One concern I don't have is the need is there. That's without a doubt. But, you know, I'm part of that group that went around, I think to every township in the county, along with then our county manager, maybe some of the other senior staff, and we met with groups of folks, most of them parents of students throughout the county, and we explained to them, and this is one of the things we're paying for now, because maybe we didn't do a good enough job, that if you approve those bonds, it's going to cost you eight cents or 10 cents. And I think one of the biggest problems is when you have a small percent of the people come out, and the ones, when you have to pay for the bill, they are very upset that you're going to have to raise their taxes, but I say shame on you, because you didn't go out and vote against them. I have to do, I have to do what I'm sworn to do, and that's do what you tell me to do. But I'd like to, you know, go a little step further than Mr. Williams and actually ask the attorney, which I haven't had a chance to before the meeting, given the fact that the bond was laid out to the citizens, that there were a couple of capital projects on there, renovations, I think, Hawksnest and Hunter Hus. And, you know, the majority of those funds were told to be, we told the public they would be used for construction of new facilities. I guess, number one, is it okay to change, or since we built one new facility, does that cover all of it? And then what would your recommendation as the attorney be with regards to possibly, okay, the local government commission has agreed to extend us three years, correct, on the bonds that aren't expended already? But that's, the final decision's up to us whether we continue that. We have till November to agree to it or not. If we are not defending the integrity of the word of the bond message, we would have time to put a new bond-ish, a new bond referendum on the ballot for November. We've got plenty of time for that. Where do we stand legally?
Well, I'll take them in order. First of all, you are allowed to change the purpose, and as we mentioned earlier, there's a series of cases decided by our Supreme Court that provides a process for doing that. The courts recognize that over time, conditions change, and there may be a need to adjust from what the original purpose of the bonds were, and we've had direct experience with a changed condition from a previous bond. As you mentioned, we were presented with the opportunity to purchase an existing building, the Hawksnest facility, which obviated the need, I believe, to build a new elementary school. So those kind of opportunities come along unexpectedly, economic conditions change or whatever, the courts have provided for a process to reallocate your bonds, and that process is for the school board to make a request detailing the changed conditions and the needs that exist, which they've done, and then for the commissioners to make a determination that those needs do indeed exist, and to approve the reallocation of those bonds. What you certainly can do is conduct public meetings to get citizen input, ask the school board to give you more details on the projects that need to be done. You know, take as much time as you need to satisfy yourself that the request that they've made is something that needs to be done to maintain the constitutional school term, and that's the mandate that each board shares. And you both have duties related to that mandate. So you have, in fact, voted tonight to extend the bond authority. If you decide later to consider a request for an issuance, I think it would be very appropriate to conduct some meetings at which you invite the public to come and hear what those changed conditions are, what the new projects will be, and give you their feedback on that request before you make a decision. I'm not sure I answered the last question you had or not. You only hit me with it again.
Yeah, I understand everything you're saying. I just, well, number one, it's legal.
Yes.
Okay, so that concern is gone. If we decided to not use the money that is left over from '07 that was intended for new construction and hold a new bond referendum for whatever the needs are for the schools now, that could be done by November.
Well, I hesitate to answer that question, because I think the local government commission would question the need to do that while you're sitting on authority, and I'm not sure that they would authorize a referendum when you're sitting on $95 million of authority.
And I just want the board to help me with this. The voters voted to primarily build buildings. Chuck says that we have the authority to change the intent. So are we, you know...
Can I attempt to answer?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Here's what we're looking at. What the board would like to do is to have a new referendum and give it out to the public and allow the public to advise us on what they would want us to do. Here's the problem. By law, you can't have an advisory referendum. So we can't do that. That's what we would like to do as a board, but can't do it. Second of all, the bonds that are already let, if we allow those to sunset, then we're going to have to spend more taxpayer money, over $50,000, to have a new referendum. You're going to have to spend more money for your attorneys and everything else to go through the contractual requirements for, I think it's the League of Governments, am I right? Am I right with that?
Local Government Commission.
Local Government Commission.
Yes.
Then, the bonds we have now, we're pretty good on the interest rate. Who knows what we're going to get down the road? So I think the best decision that we can make is simply this. Go ahead, extend the bonds, which is what we've done, then allow the public through several meetings before we, as a board, reallocate it, to come to the board and tell us, yes, we want you to reallocate that towards infrastructure needs, or no, we don't want you to. That would be the most fiscally responsible thing to do, and I think we can have plenty of meetings to allow the public to do that. Does that help?
Yeah.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Okay. Pardon me. Thank you. I don't know what's allergy or trying to take a cold. I fully support the resolution as presented, and the reason I am, we are elected by the public to make these judgment decisions. That's the reason we're elected. If you want polls, then you just ask everybody to send it in on a computer and whatever it is, that's what it is. Now, that's the reason we're elected. That's the type of government we have, and I have no problem with approving these. You keep referring to it as new schools. When I voted for the bonds, it was for new construction. New construction might be putting a new roof on a school, or a new air conditioner or heating unit in. So I have no problem making this decision on behalf of the citizens of Gaston County, so I'll support this.
Commissioner Price?
Thank you. Would it be safe to say members of the school, faculty, and board that the 8.5 million would take two summers, three summers to use up? Two?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Booker.
First, let me say thank you. This is a great debate, and it's what we're all about as a country, but we're also about public education. And you're... And your commitment to the 8.5 million that you're referring to, Mr. Price, allows us to do four significant roof projects. They'll take 60 to 120 days to design. We'll bid those, and they'll be completed within a year. The other money is a lot of what we call life safety issues, fire alarm systems, security systems, camera systems. That work will take a period of time, but again, it can be done relatively fast, because it involves smaller contractors who do things. An example of that is the $500,000 you all were gracious and gave us when you sold that property for technology. We came with you and gave you a list, and we estimated we could do eight to 10. We're actually up to 13 schools that now have the internet access. And so we try to be very accountable with the money that you give us, and we try to expediently spend that money, because we have needs today. And so that 8.5 will take a while. If you see the breakdown, we left a million dollars for design fees and future, and that was what gets to what you're discussing now. We have identified over $100 million.
Hold on, Mr. Booker. Let's get to Mr. Price's question. If, if we, the 8.5, about, I'm assuming we probably have six months to get contracts and everything going, so you're probably looking at maybe the end of the year before you spend that?
No, sir. Some of that is what we would call shovel-ready.
Okay.
Because it's security systems, alarm systems, that we can go straight to work on. And so we would hope to get some of that started this summer and do those type of projects. The longer lead time are the roofing projects. But those will, again, because we've tried to always keep one or two designed in anticipation of funding, that goes back to the old days when we used to get the money from the state of one and a half to $2 million, and that's what we have to do.
So we're looking at next year, not this budget year, but next budget year, before you would need an infusion of maybe $5 million to go along. Am I correct?
Depending on the size of the projects, yes, sir. That speaks to the 15 million.
Okay. I'm just trying to work out a timetable of how soon you would need something after the 8.5 million.
Yes, sir.
What are you looking at, 2016?
We're currently in fiscal year 15. It might hit the later part of fiscal 15, which would be in calendar 16.
Okay. So everybody's got a crystal ball we want to look into, and, you know, what's the economy? How's our property tax situation, revow, revenue? How's the sales tax progressing? So I guess one thing this board didn't do, and I was here, and I voted not to do it, and that was to raise taxes. When the bonds were passed, 2008, we were hit recession, the economy went in the clunker, and we just took it compassion from the citizens of the county, not to put that extra burden on them at that time. Although the bonds had been approved, and we told them upfront, bond approval means we're going to have to raise the property tax rate to pay for the bonds. But I think these bonds have been approved. I think whether it's new construction, a new roof, whatever, I think we're, I don't mind hearing further citizen input, but I think we're splitting hairs when the citizens have voted to spend a total of $175 million. We're not nowhere close to that, but I think we'll have, this board, or a board, will have time, by the time the 8.5 million is spent, to look at the 15 million, how, how much of that you want to do, how much you want to issue at one time, but we have to do it by November 2017. We acted on that tonight, right?
Yes, sir.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Booker, quick question, please. Out of the 54 schools we have currently in our school system today, let's fast forward to 2017. I know it's, when me and you talked before, our school system has schools that are 70 years old right now. That pushes us out, you know, a couple of years, but I don't know what our oldest school is. Let's just say the two that come to mind for me, Stanley Middle and Belmont Middle. Where are they going to be online as far as, let's just say, 2020, to want a new school, then all of a sudden, we're going to be looking for bonds again to reallocate to, you know, to build those schools? Is that going to be something that we could? I guess what I'm trying to say is, are we putting too much at one time? I don't mind, I said, I know we have plenty of needs. You've identified those, and I want to thank you for your efforts that you've done, your time over there, but I want to find out now, where are we as far as the allocation of when the next new school will need to be built?
Well, it's a great question, Commissioner Brown, because it is a chicken in the egg. Because if you go back to when the bonds were passed, we had 32,500 students and looking straight up at 37,000. Today, as we look at the peninsula, those white pipes that have set dormant since 2007 now have activity around them. We believe, the state believes, we're going to begin to grow again as a school system. Will we add 5,000 students as projected before? That remains to be seen, but that would be the type of discussion. One of the things that our board, working with you all, committed to, and we have now a committee of the board, four members, who are doing a total evaluation of the facilities. And this goes back to what was done back in 1999, when we did an analysis of all the existing facilities and said, that's what developed the bond issue for 2001 and for 2007 of that. So that same document is being developed again in response to the discussions between the two boards. What we're asking for in this interim step is to say, we have glaring needs, and what Chairman Lutz wrote in his communication about this 15 million was to say, we would not do an improvement on any facility that we deem would be closed in the foreseeable future. But, Mr. Brown, you bring up a great point when you talk about the old high schools that now serve as middle schools. Mount Holly, Stanley, Belmont, Chavis, these are old high schools that have been adapted to middle schools. So how much do we want to invest before we say a building that was 50, 70 years old should be equated to a building that is now 2015, 2017, and the different changes? That's an evaluation that's part of that. But the unfortunate part is, today, you have children in those facilities. And as you know all too well, we spent a lot of time and energy this past fall at Stanley Middle School. And we've got a situation where we'll be right back where we were, spending money after bad, so to speak, if we don't do something to address that in the short run. So we've got to look at those options. We put a roof on that facility 22 months ago. That was an investment in it to say, we'll continue to use it. But you are right, as a comprehensive evaluation, those type of things should come to the top. They won't be evaluated in time to impact particularly the eight and a half, but we're not doing anything to those facilities except for some life safety issues.
And I guess my follow-up question to that is, in certain areas, such in Gastonia, we have facilities that we make it, that are not attended to the capacity, so to speak, that we could change some people around. You get to places like Stanley, Belmont, outlying areas, there's nowhere to actually put them unless we actually have to build. And that's one of the things I asked about Stanley Middle, was making sure if we're going to do the HVAC, let's do the windows to maybe try to combat both problems we have. And that's where my issue came with trying to figure out what was on the CIP that you guys had addressed. My, I just, if you had an educated guess, when would we need a new facility for one of our oldest schools? I mean, what is our?
It sounds flippant.
I understand.
But to be honest with you, you have a number of facilities that should be replaced today. Economically, that's a burden. I share in paying taxes, along with everyone making these decisions. And so we have, as a community, have said, we will repair, we will renovate. Hunter Hus High School today, the media center at Hunter Hus High School is equivalent to Stuart W. Kramer's media center. Now, it took $800,000 of renovation and replacement to do that. So we can do that with old facilities, it just takes a significant investment. And so when you go to Hunter Hus with what we were allocated in the first bond issue to do work there, you go down one hall, and science classrooms were renovated on part of the hall. They weren't renovated on the other part of the hall, because that's how much money you had. But that facility that was renovated is equal to, standard-wise, a new facility. But then you have some older buildings, when we start talking about Americans with Disabilities Acts, and trying to make those buildings accessible, it becomes cost prohibitive as well as functionally prohibited to meet that. And so tear down and replace is more effective. You can look at some of our older facilities and the design at that time, they were very open campuses. Today, with the things we encounter as a community, say our campuses need to be more confined and controlled, so that people can't wander through the campus without having to present identification. So they cause a different challenge, and you don't want to renovate that, you need to replace that. So will, when will growth cause us to have one? Probably not in the foreseeable future. But when will we be throwing good money after bad? We could be doing that as we do any work on some of these older facilities.
Let me ask you a $90 million question.
I'll take it.
You want new schools, the ones that can provide some of the areas that are needed, such as, and let's use an example, I'm not, I use these examples because I've been there, I know how bad they are, Stanley Middle, Belmont Middle? Or do you want the 90 million to put toward the capital improvement? I know that helps a lot, because you help more schools, but what I'm saying is, in the long run, is your tenure there, what do you prefer?
I believe that we're going to have to do both, Mr. Brown. That the 90 million, we will look, as this committee does its analysis, you will see us come back and say, we need to replace this school, and we need to expand it, we need to look at our capacities of what we do currently. We say a middle school has 800 children. Do we look at that number and say that it should be 1,000 children and change what we do? Educationally, there are challenges to that, but are we saying from a capacity standpoint? Those are all the things that this committee, that committee has five charges, and one of them does to, to look at our capacity of the buildings and the attendance of those buildings. So I believe we'll get some of that data for you, but if you said to me today, I'll take the $90 million, and I will tell you that we will give you more than $90 million worth of value. We have a rising graduation rate, we have an improving literacy rate, and we are delivering with what we have today, but we can deliver more.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Booker, I'm going to have one question. Do you have a copy of the resolution?
Today's, tonight's resolution?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, I have the packet.
Can you pull that out? Also, fellow board members, if you have it, if you turn to one, page 107. Let's have a quick question for you. If you would be okay with this, okay, at the bottom it says, now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners makes the following findings. You have, number one, it is in the best interest of the citizens of Gaston County to issue additional school bonds in order to maintain the constitutional school term. By the way, we're required to do that by law. Not the issue of bonds, but you're going to have to rate, one way or another, you have to do it. Number two is the following, that following the approval process for extending the authority to issue school bonds under the 2007 referendum, the Board of Commissioners intend to move forward to issue 15 million in school bonds. What I'd like to do with number two, which I think we may could get more consensus, is if we scratch out number two and put this language, and I'll do it if, if we decide, but number two would be to seek public input. And number two would be to, to, let me see here. It would, it would say, we intend to move forward with the issuance of school bonds contingent upon the results of public hearings and clear details from the school board as to where the money is spent. That, that could actually give you even more than the 15 million. Would you be good with that?
I work for nine elected officials, if I can put that disclaimer to it. But what we're here today to say is, we have needs, and we're seeking funding for those needs, and we're willing to talk to anybody. As you all know, I've spent 16 nights in our community talking, and I've heard from folks who care about the condition of our facilities, and I will welcome the opportunity for us to continue to talk about that.
Well, that's basically what this does. Instead of giving a specific number, we may decide a year from now, hey, the public, we've had public hearings, they think we should give more. If you get tied to this specific number in the resolution, somebody's going to come back and say, well, this is what it said, now you have to change it. So to me, it's actually better for the school board. Would you be good with that?
I'm glad Chairman Philbeck, as long as the two bodies are working together, we're all doing what's right. I look forward to that.
And a number three would be that the county manager and financial director should work with the school superintendent to develop an appropriate plan to reallocate and issue additional funds. I know, is there any other discussion from the board? Commissioner Price?
In the resolution title, you have 15 mentioned also. You might want to just scratch out 15 and put additional or something.
Yep. I would just say to issue school bonds.
Commissioner Brown has one last question.
Just wanted to know about indicative, that money being out there in the public hearings and stuff, your designs and type of stuff, would that be something that would have to be moved on as we move forward quickly? Or is it something you need the money? You know, say if there was something left over, 8.5, to try to push into that so you could get through? Does that be something that you would have to have as well?
I think Commissioner Price made a good point. The first tranche of money will be a lot of work for us to start working on. And then the facilities subcommittee is working diligently on that, and they're going to give an update to the board and talking about some of those steps. So it would be several weeks, maybe even months, before they got to a culminating point with that recommendation. So I believe we have the opportunity to work towards that and not move forward with the design on something that wouldn't be used in the long term. Is that the question?
Chairman Philbeck had to step out for a moment. Does that answer your question, Mickey?
Yeah.
To Mr. Price. Okay, is there any other questions of, okay?
Well, one, just clarify something. Yeah, I'm very familiar with Stanley and Mount Holly and Belmont Middle Schools, but we're not talking about them. Belmont Middle School, as far as how, how closed in it is, is a real concern for me. No athletic fields to speak of, things like that. But we're not discussing that, and why we've got this, this conversation going, and if we start having some public hearings, I think the school board should bring that into the discussion.
Yes, sir. It is part of that.
You know, between now and November, when we have these public hearings, it's got to be part of it, because that, that's going to be a much tougher sell, I think, because if, you're going to try to sell people around the county, if you're going to pick one high school first, say Stanley or Belmont, are the people in Mount Holly going to go for it? The people in Cherryville, the people, you know, all around, you know, we're a little unique, and I think that needs a little more work on it. You know, we have to do what we have to do, but we need to start talking about it, and I'm just not hearing anything on those middle schools. So I just hope it's really part of the intent of these public hearings to include replacement for those couple of schools that need it. I hope also that there's some discussion about some properties that may be able to be closed permanently or temporarily, and then the, the maintenance and construction. All three. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I could support it with that contingency in there. I think, again, as I said, my, my biggest concern is, I know Commissioner Carpenter had talked about, you know, when he voted for the bonds, he voted for new construction, whether that's roofs or a new building or whatever, and I respect that. I just think many people may not have. I think many people may have voted for new construction, for new buildings that was sold because of overcrowding and, and things of that nature. So that, that leads me to think additional schools, if you're talking about overcrowding and all that. It doesn't make me think a new roof. With that said, again, I do support us moving forward with it, and I do think that this contingency we put in there, seeking public opinion and, and trying to get way in from, from our citizens, is the best way to move forward. I also think it gives us time to address our, our budget needs. I think it's going to give us time to, to have a plan for how we're going to pay for it, because I don't think, at this point, we, we have a plan to pay for it. So I think we need that in place before we just move on selling additional bonds. So I'd support that, I look forward to it, and I hope and would expect maybe Chairman Lutz and, and other members of your board to attend these public meetings, come to these public hearings, you know, if you'd like to come, but I just would think it would be in all of our best interest if, if this was a mutual thing, and as people got to share their concerns, we all would get to hear it, and hopefully we could all benefit from it. So I support it with that contingency, because I think it just allows us time to get input, get our budget in order this year, and figure out how we want to address it if we decide to move forward. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. I would like to take a moment, recognize Vice Chair of the School Board, Jeff Ramsey. And is there anyone else here?
And is there anyone else here? Kevin Collier is here as well.
And he chairs the subcommittee that is looking into the facilities.
Thank you both for coming out. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to make a motion to amend the original motion. I'll need a second for that.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Keger. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. At this time, I'll make a motion, at this time, I'll state the actual motion. What I'd like to do is approve item I with these changes, to take out 15 million in the resolution title, where it reads the state, to state the intent of the Board of Commissioners to issue school bonds. So we'll take out 15 million. And then on item two, it will be amended to read as follows, that the Board of Commissioners intends to move forward to issue school bonds contingent upon the result of public hearings and clear detail from the school board as to where monies are to be spent. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Say.
Seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. That's it, right? Commissioner Keger?
Would you allow me to make a comment regarding school funding issue?
You can, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
The item I has passed with those amendments. Am I correct?
Right.
Go ahead, Commissioner Keger, and then we're going to move on fairly quickly.
And why the school boards here represented, and represented, and Mr. Booker, and some representatives of school organizations. I've preached this, and I know I'm preaching to the choir, I know that, but we've got to get word out. You know, with how many teachers, and how many parents, it's one of the strongest voting blocks we have. We have to let the General Assembly know that they've got to do their job a lot better. And in the last eight decades, since 1949, did a little homework, there's been one facility's appropriation bill by Raleigh to the schools in North Carolina, one in eight decades, and only five state school bond referendums have been passed. That's horrendous for a state school system. So I don't know how we can do it, but we've got to let the folks in Raleigh know, and it's easy to come here, and we hear it, and we know it, and we pass it on. But when you've got thousands and thousands of teachers and parents, you imagine if a third of them sent emails, or letters, or phone calls, and that's what it takes? So that's my little saying.
Thank you, Commissioner Keger. I just wanted to follow up. I failed to mention, and I do apologize, we passed several items that we're going to be working with very closely with Cramerton. I think Commissioner Price is going to introduce some of their elected officials who were here tonight. I do apologize.
Gentlemen from Cramerton, did, would y'all like to say anything about the project that we approved tonight? I've got Mr. Leinberger out there, and members of the council. And I'm scared.
If you're going to speak, come over here to the microphone. People on TV won't be able to hear you.
Okay, fair enough. I'll cut in right quick. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to apologize for being late. We work in Charlotte, Kevin Collier and I, and we need another bridge to come across the Toba River, because we sit in traffic on 485 and 85, but I apologize. And thank you for what you're doing, working with us, and we look forward to having them in public hearings in townships.
Just don't let it happen again.
I know, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. I'll be very brief. I'm Mayor Protem, Will Cawthorne of the town of Cramerton. With me, we also have Commissioner Demetrius Katsupias, and our Finance Director, Joel Leinberger. On behalf of Manager Michael Peoples and Mayor Ronnie Worley, we thank you all for approving the motions you did tonight. We very much look forward to working with the county on these projects. We're very excited as we move forward, and we think it's going to be a real asset to the county and to the town of Cramerton. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last item on non-consent is a zoning map change. I'll go ahead and make the motion for a zoning map change, Z1403, for Venture Church Incorporated. And I'm assuming, second by Commissioner Brown. We're in discussion phase. Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The, as was explained to you by Mr. Williams, the request was adjusted to 8.5 acres from the original request of 12.63 acres. So the planning board approved the request for the rezoning to C3 for the eight and a half acre portion of that parcel, as was explained to you.
That is actually my motion. And seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Our next item, there's no items called for consent. Our next item is appointments. Commissioner Fraley?
I have two, Mr. Chairman. Emergency Medical Services Committee, Hol Withers. Family Advisory Board, James Burgess.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Commissioner Brown?
Been making one on behalf of the JCPC with the school system as well, to put Melissa Bautnait as the superintendent's appointee.
Second. Commissioner Brown made the motion. Commissioner Price seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Commissioner Price?
No appointments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got two. Family Advisory Board, Jerry McLean, and Personnel Advisory Board, Jeff McKeehan.
I will second those. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Commissioner Carpenter?
I have one appointment to the Travel and Tourism Board, and that's Mr. Joe Long.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner Keger. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Keger?
None tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Keger.
You're welcome.
At this time, we are at Commissioners Committee Reports. Commissioner Fraley?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brown?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Price?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attended the DHS Board meeting this past week. It was a great meeting. We did approve our budget for the year. That should be coming to Mr. Mathers fairly quickly. Also, we have passed in both Division of Public Health and Division of Human Social Services. We have surpassed our lap salary budget figure, and we are well on our way to setting a record, which causes us some concern that during our next budget discussions, the, I think Commissioner Keger has sent out a email to this effect, but some of our staff members are leaving, going to other entities in, around Gaston County for, usually the case is more financial reward. I think, I don't know if we want to have our HR person do it, or if we want to have Mr. Dobbins and his staff do it, to see what comparable positions in adjacent counties are doing, but the caseload is, in some cases, overburdening, and it's just causing some employee morale problems. I just want, I hope that Mr. Dobbins is here, I hope he can take back the comments that I'm making, that the board is aware of it, and I hope we can get something worked out by July 1st. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to remind everybody, the Karamot Community Health Challenge is May the 17th. Mr. Mullenau came and did a, an update for us about a month or two ago about that, and just want to remind everybody to come out. My wife and I will be running in our first 5K on that day, and my only goal is to beat her, so we'll see if that happens or not. But there's going to be a lot of things going on, there's going to be a bike ride, I think Commissioner Brown's probably going to be participating in that. So you need to come out. There's going to be a one-mile fun walk, a lot of fun stuff, and just a good way to get active on a beautiful spring day, Saturday, May the 17th. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Just one, on April the 14th, I was able to file and pay my taxes.
Commissioner Keger?
Yeah, not that it was a committee, but I did get to the run for the money to help out with the Y a little bit, not long. It's, I'm not sure how, anybody know how much they took in yet? I don't think so. But that's always a great event, and Mr. Price talked about the Health and Human Service Committee that we both serve on, and I just want to piggyback on, you know, that email he referenced that I sent out regarding morale, pay for our employees. He didn't mention that Health and Human Service and HR for the county did determine that approximately 90% of all folks transferring out of Health and DSS areas, and it's probably been in the area 50 people this year, that's a big number, was for pay. And, you know, it's, it's, I'm not going to, I don't want to debate this or anything, but it's something, whether I win, lose, or draw, in two weeks from tonight in the election, we need to have a discussion about employee pay raises. You know, they've not had an actual raise in six years, and it's been, we have given them some checks two of those years. And teachers, I mean, I've got immediate family members that've spent 40 years in the Gaston County schools, and I don't know if, since the first year, 16 years ago, we've been able to afford a supplement for the teachers, and my youngest daughter left, and you all know that, went to Mecklenburg County to make $5,000 more. And even though it's a state system, and as Joe has spoken many times, they don't make it equitable for us, we need to at least have a discussion on it. And we're losing teachers left and right also. I know it, you know it, but it's time we talked about it.
Mr. Chairman?
That's it.
Commissioner Price?
Mr. Doug Lance is here. I was, if we could ask him what the pretrial, the bill is going to do to a total year's budget, as far as the, he's just, we just gave him enough to get through the end of this year, but what the bill is going to do to a total year?
Can you do that in about three minutes, Doug?
Sure.
Okay. Can you do it in two then?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
Thanks, Doug.
We're still looking at the figures. I think the thing that's going to show the most is going to be, and we'll have to work with the sheriff on that, but I think the thing that's going to determine how much costs rise, and whether or not we can hold the line in that, is going to be the number of bookings. We're estimating right now somewhere between 4,200 and 5,000 extra bookings into the jail, into the jail. Actually, where a bond's got to be set, and people are staying at least overnight or for a few hours. And I think the sheriff would concur that, you know, that's going, that's going to put a serious dent in everything that we do. For this coming year, we did ask for an increase, and most of the increase is going to be for technology services. We were running about 100 people on biometrics, which is a digital voice imprint, and we're running another 60 to 70. These are high-risk offenders on GPS bracelets, and I think that's going to go a lot higher. And the cost on that, while it's better than a stay in the jail, it still adds up. And we're not going to know the full effect of this until we can all sit down and crunch these numbers. We only have one quarter's worth, but in that first quarter, we, pretrial took in, we generally take in 950 new clients per quarter, and from January until March, we took in 1,254. That's new, new people that we haven't seen before. So it's going to be rough.
Commissioner Carpenter has one question.
Thank you, Doug, and thank you for the work you've done for the many years, and saved the citizens of this county and the state millions of dollars, the program that you have in place. With this change in the law, has it been any benefit to the safety of the citizens? Has any been changed?
Well, the thing about this law was, is they, this law was not the one that we fought against.
Yeah, I know.
You know, they wanted a law that would do away completely with unsecured bonds. And what they did is, they went to a law and order. If you read the, if you read the bill, I have a copy of it tonight, if you want to look at it. When you read the bill, the first page is something that everybody's got to agree on, if it's a violent offense, or if somebody commits an offense with a gun, or assaults somebody, you know, that part of it you can all agree on. But it's the second page where they came in and attached this, this law, and they kind of slid it under the table. And that's why they sat back and said, you know, they told our commissioners, they told the County Commissioners Association, you know, we're not, don't worry about that anymore, we're not going to go for it. And they had this, they slid this under the table the whole time. And we were, I hate to say this, but we were called our proverbial pants down. And I think it caught everybody by surprise, it caught me by surprise. I had the jail administrator call me mid-December and say, what's going on? And I looked at the jail count, and I said, I don't know.
I'd like to get a copy of that bill, because we meet with our legislators Friday.
Okay.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
I did want to make one comment under Committee Reports. Just like to thank Commissioner Carpenter and the board, there's a lot of work that goes into some of the decisions that were made today with the schools. And I just don't want to pass up an opportunity to say thanks. I think it's good that we can have good debate, work together, work with the school board, and get some things accomplished, and I'm proud of that fact. So at this time, Mr. Managers, do you have a report?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Is it brief?
It's brief, sir.
Thank you.
And, but I do want to address one issue that I didn't really have on my list, and that has to do with compensation. And I certainly agree that the DHHS department is, you know, a major problem, inasmuch as that it's our largest department with some 600 employees. Obviously, compensation in that department is a huge issue. But this is an issue that permeates our entire county government. And, you know, I think compensation issues and the attrition that's associated with that is becoming endemic in our organization. And, you know, really, a 3% salary increase is, just stops the bleeding a little bit. In my view, it would help us to at least show good faith to our employees, and if we did choose to go forward with the salary survey, which has been suggested, and has considerable merit under certain conditions, I think it's somewhat frightening what we might discover. The problem is, in some cases, it, you know, the, we might be only 5% or 7% off of market, in some cases, we could be 20% or 25% off of market. And when you identify those problems, it's, in good conscience, you pretty much have to address them, and that would have tremendous budgetary impact for us. So I just had to, had to state that. Just a couple of quick points. You know, I feel really good about the Grants Department that we have at Gaston County. We've had some recent successes with several grants, mainly in the criminal justice system, that have been very successful, as well as another 110,000 approximately for, from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, that combines with 200,000 that we already received from them. Our senior center recently received notification that the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Division of Aging has certified our center as and Human Services Division of Aging has certified our center as one of excellence. GEMS has been updating their paramedic certifications, and incidentally, we have a much higher ratio of certified people in our system than most. Couple of people in 911 Dispatch received special notoriety just recently in the Journal, which is a journal for the emergency dispatch profession. Katrina Love's work as a dispatcher was noted, and she helped some folks talking them through the delivery of a baby, as well as dispatching responders in a situation where her father needed to be transported to the hospital. Chase Fowler is a relatively new telecommunicator, and he helped talk down an armed suspect recently. And I think it's just important to note that our telecommunications or our dispatchers are really the critical link between our emergency responders and the citizens that populate our county, and without them, we'd have major problems. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Moore?
You have a request for a closed session for personnel issues, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next item of business is a closed session. Do I hear a motion to enter closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11A6, to discuss a personnel matter? Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Williams. We are now in closed session. This time, do I hear a motion to re-enter open session?
Nada.
Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor? We are now re-entered into open session. This time, I would report there was no action taken in closed session. This concludes our meeting for tonight. Our next work session is May the 13th. Our next regular meeting is May the 27th at 6:00 PM at the Harley B Gaston Junior Public Forum Courthouse. Thank you for watching. If you have questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, Donna Buff, at 866-3196, and share them. This time, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Kieger. All in favor? Passed unanimously. We are now adjourned.